Please rise and ask for the invocation by Reverend Bill Gerard, retired United Methodist minister.
Let us pray. Dear Creator of all things and life, giver of every good gift, we experience anew the ways you're creating for us in the bursting forth of flower upon the tree and the dead branches yielding the vibrant green of new life. As we see your handiwork in the springtime, make us mindful that all things come from thee, that the ground of our sustenance, our life and survival, are a gift from you to all creatures and humankind. As those who are given authority by you over the affairs of our city make their choices tonight, may they render them so that all citizens may be blessed by the resources from you they have at their disposal, especially the overlooked and the ignored. May your spirit give all here minds of wisdom, hearts of compassion, and an ever-biding confidence in the work of your grace in us and among us, and the power of the gift of your love, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's observe a minute of silent reflection for the memory of Libby Meisner, Bruce's wife, whose funeral was today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to call Lieutenant Champion to come forward with the requisites of our public safety. Will you introduce each one of them, please?
Tonight we have with us our telecommunications supervisors Shelley Davis and Nicole Sane, alongside the telecommunications Jenny Davis, Emily Bell, and Holly Page.
These are the phones that actually call when there's an emergency and they have to make quick decisions, often with incomplete information from people who are very emotional, not thinking clearly, and they have to get the right help to them and ensure it's not a disaster. Whereas emergencies requiring police, fire, or emergency medical services can occur at any time. Whereas here in emergency situations, prompt response is critical in protection of life and preservation of property. Whereas the information obtained and disseminated by the communications center directly affects the safety of our police officers responding to emergencies. Whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first in which crucial contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas public safety telecommunicators are the direct lifeline for our first responders by monitoring their activities via radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Whereas the communicators of the Hickory Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminal and assistance to the citizens of Hickory. Whereas each telecommunicator, while faced with the extreme stressors of the job, continues to exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism due to the performance of their job as paid to you. Now therefore, on behalf of Hickory City Council, I proclaim the week of April 12th to 18th to be National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Hickory. Let's hear it. Who do you want to present this to? We don't want anybody getting left out of the picture here. Are you ready? We thought there's... Well, I thought you were going to say anything about the beauty here without Jeff. To this, thank you all. Do you want to have him say anything?
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Ratt, Mr. Crum, it's an honor to be here tonight to recognize the dedicated telecommunications that serve the citizens of Hickory and the officers of Hickory Police Department. The service these men and women provide often goes unrecognized by the general public, but it's a crucial component of public safety. To use a sports analogy, our telecommunications are like the offensive line of a football team. They guide the way for our running back or our quarterback, which are the police officers, but rarely receive the recognition they deserve when the game is won. They are confronted by many of the same tragedies law enforcement officers face, and I was recently reminded of this, this last summer. I had the opportunity to hear a presentation provided by the supervising telecommunications from Sandy Hook, Connecticut, who was on duty the day the tragic school shooting occurred. Then just last month, I attended a presentation provided by the lead investigator from the Connecticut State Police. The telecommunications listened to the events take place over the telephone while the investigator observed the tragic aftermath. The effect that this incident had on both these individuals was eerily similar and something they will struggle with for the rest of their life. I would encourage you to thank these dedicated men and women for their service the next time you call your dispatch center or any other center. I and other members of the Hickory Police Department know they are a vital component of our team and truly appreciate their service. Thank you.
Now, we as a city, a community, are committed to fair housing, and the first line of defense for fair housing is the river. They're the ones that are involved between the buyers and sellers. So I'm going to ask representatives of the local Association of Realtors, Debbie First and Chris Rose, come forward. Whereas April 11th marks the 47th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, and national origin. Whereas the Chicago Valley Association of Realtors is committed to highlight the Fair Housing Act by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing, and to plan partnership efforts to help assure all people of their right to fair housing. Whereas the National Association of Realtors Code of Ed commits all realtors to provide equal professional services without discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, sexual orientation, gender identity, and that's for it. Now therefore, on behalf of Hickory City Council, I hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Hickory. Well, I'm giving the man...
The gift is always good to the lady.
You don't have anything you'd like to say?
Just thank you very much on behalf of the board of directors of the Chicago Valley Association of Realtors. Thanks to the City Council.
Thank you.
Y'all notice anything different about this table tonight?
Yeah.
Kind of like it, don't you?
Yeah.
I like it. Make sure that's in the minutes.
We don't want Mr. Berry to not know.
I thought maybe it was like because he was missing.
Oh, no, no. We like having Mr. Berry here, I promise you. But it's just something nice about the way it looks to me. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of March 17th?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Seaver, second by Patton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That is unanimous. Mr. Meisner is absent. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
Move so.
I would like to remove item K, please.
From the second reading?
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, that's the next one.
So that there is no item K?
There is no item K.
So we have a motion.
Second.
Motion by Leo, second by Zaggar Rowley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Would you like to remove K?
I'd like to remove K, just for...
From the consent agenda.
From the consent agenda, Ms. Patton has asked to remove K. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item L5 from the consent agenda.
And Mr. Berry wants to remove L5.
Mr. Berry.
He's got Mr. Berry on his mind.
Mr. Berry, just for your information, is attending his daughter's graduation from college. So, okay, with the exception of K and L5, do we have a motion to approve?
Well, I move approval of consent agenda without excluding items K and L5.
Second.
Motion by Seaver, second by Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion's carried. K.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So item K takes us to a request for to accept the Southern Desk property, so a deed of conveyance. So as you recall, Southern Desk was demolished as a nuisance site. The property owner who did the work at the time was not interested to keep title to that property. It's being conveyed to the city for a dollar, and so that agreement is in your packet. So the site's been cleaned, the city's performed an environmental assessment, phase one, and so we are anxious to take title to the property.
I just wanted to comment that I think it is just a real kudos to the planning department and our code enforcement that has been after this for five, six years trying to track it all down, and their persistence and it is our code enforcement has done a fantastic job. And then with the assessment that they did, we could help redevelop that part of the town, and I'm extremely excited about this. They've done a great job.
Yeah, that has been great, and we have had to, we've had to deal with a property owner prior to Mr. Knite, a property owner that had very little interest in this property that he owned in a state in which he did not reside. And those things are very difficult for us sometimes. And I know the reaction we often get will punish them, foreclose. Well, sometimes we don't want to foreclose. Sometimes we don't want all the property. And punishing, hey, we don't have debtors' prisons. It's very hard to punish people.
Do we have any kind of timeframe from here forward?
To dispose of the property to someone else?
No, for us to actually take ownership.
This is it?
Pretty soon.
Yeah.
You've taken ownership. There'll be a deed, probably is a deed, trapped that's waiting on your approval.
This is the deed. So it's in your packet? Right. So it starts page 119?
Immediately.
Good job.
Mr. Leo, L5.
Yeah, I would move that I be excused from voting on L5. This is a, it's actually a budget amendment to transfer money from contingency to pay for a contract, but the contract's with the firm that my wife is with. So I would move that I be excused from voting.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That is unanimous.
You need to go back and...
So now I make a motion that we transfer that money to pay land design.
Second.
Motion by Wright, second by Seaver. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And I think you need to go back, excuse me, to K.
I don't know that we approved K.
You didn't vote.
You didn't. I don't think you voted.
I'd make a motion to approve K.
Second.
Motion by Guest, second by Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Crum. Okay, we did, we approved L5.
Yes, sir.
And we have, as an informational item, we have the travel of Mr. Berry and five of our council members to the Emerging Issues Forum in Raleigh. Next, the departmental report.
Mayor, I'd like to recognize Kevin Greer, our city's Assistant Public Services Director for Public Utilities. He's going to give an update on the Catawba Water E- Water Management Group's work. They've developed a master plan for the water supply watershed, and that information is shared with you. He has a short video and then some, just some general information. You recall, we're part of that larger group, and Mr. Greer has attended a number of meetings over the years. And so as a result of this presentation, he's asking for your approval of the resolution to support the master plan as developed by the Catawba Water E- Water Management Group.
Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Ratt, Mr. Crum, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening regarding the water supply master plan for the Catawba Water E- Water Management Group. Just a real quick history. This group really started in 2002 as a result of the FERC relicensing of all the lakes for Catawba River. So Duke was going through a relicensing process, and one of the things that came out pretty quick was they wanted to charge withdrawal fees for water. And several of you probably remember that whole discussion. So with some discussions and some work with Duke and with several of the other water providers, we actually worked it around to where we do pay dues to be a part of the Catawba Water E- Water Management Group, but we don't pay water withdrawal fees. And as long as this group's in place, of course, that discussion of water withdrawal fees has never come up again. And actually, it's kind of funny because now Duke is the second largest dues payer in the group. So they went from being the collector of the money to a part of the dues-paying group. So I've got a pretty quick presentation, I hope, for this evening. I also got a video that the water management group had made professionally to really talk about the water supply master plan and the importance kind of overarching. So if we can watch this video, it's about three minutes long.
The people who live in the Catawba River Basin depend on the Catawba River for their water supply, for their electricity, for recreation, for aesthetics, for the environmental benefits. Without the Catawba River and the water and the amenities it brings with it, there wouldn't be the quality of life that we enjoy in this region. If we keep doing things the way we've been doing them, and patterns of the past continue, somewhere around the middle of this century, we will in fact reach the capacity of the river. What that means is that we would not be able to add new houses, we would not be able to build new industries, we wouldn't be able to attract growth and development, and sustain the economic vitality that we've enjoyed for so long in this area. The Catawba Water E- Water Management Group is a nonprofit corporation that was founded in 2007, and we are the organizations and the businesses who take water out of the river on behalf of our customers for all the things that people use water for. The Catawba Water E- Water Management Group's goals and objectives are really to do projects and do work that will help the Catawba River be preserved and will make it more useful as a water supply source for a longer period of time so that this region can continue to prosper. The main objective of the basin-wide water master plan is to extend the life of the Catawba River, make it last longer. Without the river and lake system, our prospects as a region for future economic development will be significantly reduced. The water supply plan projects that by 2065, the net draw from the river basin will be 419 million gallons, that's a 122 percent increase above the current net draw of 189 million gallons. In the future, these additional water supplies will be needed to support population growth. We expect additional people to move here to this region certainly at the time. We also hope and expect to have new businesses come, whether they're manufacturing facilities or data centers, or other commercial ventures. And because of those additional uses, we're going to need more electricity production. This water supply master plan considers all those potential uses and needs and provides a vision for how we can do it. I think it's very important to think about those future generations and to do the right things for them, as the water supply master plan was just saying.
The water supply master plan looks comprehensively at what exactly is out there currently today? What are the needs going to be in 10, 20, 50, 100 years? And how are we best able to utilize this natural resource and what way that we can sustain it into the future ones we can? We have one faster growing communities as a whole. If you look at Carolina, I don't think we can sustain that. And I think the key to that is getting ahead of it before you have problems. So I'm thinking, short term, let's put the planning plans, start creating programs and design changes to the way we do this, the way we live. But let's also start looking at it in the future. How do we make sure that five years, 10 years from now, we're looking at new ways to do the same thing, to make sure that we can sustain it, even on how they go on there? Having a plan in place now in good times means when tough times come, we've already realized what we're going to do.
So the real exciting part about this plan is the fact that if there were never drought again, there's plenty of water in the Catawba River for us to continue doing exactly what we do, how we want to do it. However, what started the whole idea behind this water management group was, of course, a drought in 2002. We quickly recovered from the drought in 2002 only to have the worst drought of record in 2007 to 2009. And then we had plenty of rain in 10, and it happened again to us in 12. So we see that that's kind of a natural pattern, and the downside to it is the fact that our basin's pretty skinny. So it's a, we depend a lot on rain that comes through, and we're right here at the bottom of the mountain, we're at the foothills. So the opportunity we have to capture that rain's pretty small. Lake James is our best chance. So if it would always rain on top of Lake James, we would be golden. But our basin's pretty small, so it doesn't take long for thunderstorms to get across us, of course. In the water supply master plan, we did have several other entities that helped. This is a $1.7 million project, all said and told. In that, we actually had the Department of Environment and Natural Resources from North Carolina was 400,000 or so that they contributed. D. Heck in South Carolina was a couple hundred thousand dollars. Duke Energy Foundation was a couple hundred thousand dollars. And then, of course, the rest was funded by membership dues. That's how we afforded or paid for the rest of the project. So the master plan itself looks at what all types of things are out there that need to be changed or be tweaked or be worked on that would help us sustain this basin. So if you heard a couple of the speakers there, 2065 is the magic number now. And what that magic number means is if you look at the anticipated growth, you look at the anticipated development, you look at the anticipated droughts that are going to occur, again, for that, if there's never a drought, this is not an issue. But given that those droughts will occur in the future, we're trying to plan for those efforts. This water supply master plan sets us up pretty well for being able to address those as we work through them. If you look at the 2065 number, right now, the steam and electrical component is actually larger than the public water supply component. This is a 2065 number where we see that kind of flipping. We see the public water supply number being just a little bit bigger than what the power number is because of the fact that they're shutting down some of their coal-fired stations with, again, leaning back on a couple of nuclear stations is what they're doing with This is a pretty exciting graph when you look at it. So the top line, in 2002, we started collecting data and plugging data in, and then we made those forecasts out for where we'd be not passing the 475 million gallon a day number. So if you forecast that out, 475 million put us at somewhere between 2055 and 2060 is where pretty much we hit that max number. If you look now, the bottom number is actuals. So the dash number in the front of the yellow was actual numbers that were collected, so you could see the reason for that trend. And then if you look from the 2006 until 2012, when these numbers were collected, you see that that number's significantly less. And actually, I looked at those really quick. And the 2015 numbers themselves, you're looking at 250 million gallons a day versus 189 million gallons a day. That's a 24 percent reduction just in those two lines using actuals versus forecast. So that was a 24 percent savings there just because of the things we've already done. And council has heard me say, as well as Mr. Wood say before, that unfortunately, people listen, and they learn really good. When we ask them to turn the sink off when they're brushing their teeth, people have done that, and we see that. When we tell them not to run water when they're washing their face, take shorter showers, people are actually adhering to those things. And I'll show you a graph that's specific to Hickory, where we've got proof that those are happening. So then if you go all the way out to the end, what we've been able to do is just with these projections, no changes other than what we're seeing and was forecasted, went from really 2058 out to 2065. So we bought roughly 10 more years there, is what we ended up buying strictly with what the actual numbers are versus what we had forecasted before. Now, as part of the water management group, we've done a lot of things to kind of build us to these, to this level of knowledge. So what we've done as a group is we've put in money now ever since 2007 to fund projects. And what those projects have done is help us really get smarter about the basin and really smarter about water use globally. When we look at some of our studies, Australia has been doing a lot of work with drought response for the last 20 years. We tapped into a lot of their information. California, of course, water rights on the east coast and water rights on the west coast are two totally different things. And that's kind of a catch for us to really understand why those things are. But we've captured a lot of good information. Los Angeles has been able to almost double their population with no increase in water plant production. So that was pretty impressive, and a lot of that was through plumbing code changes, which we're seeing. So what we've done is several studies, and there's a couple of these here, the safe yield study, which really told us how much water is really in the basin, and if we do certain things, what does that mean for us in improving that safe yield? Now, safe yield is the amount of water that you can safely pull from the basin and not hurt really the overall ecosystem. Sedimentation and monitoring study, that's really just telling us how much dirt actually is coming into the lake every day and getting deposited, and that's an ongoing study for us. Water use efficiency is the, Los Angeles was one of the items that we studied in there. The low-inflow protocol response evaluation, what we did was in 2007, we implemented this low-inflow protocol, which said during drought events, we will act this way. We will call for these kinds of reductions, we will call for outside watering or not, even odd days. And there's a number of things that we called that council was a part of when we look at the low-inflow protocol. So what we did then is after two droughts, we went back and looked and said, how well did we do? And we rated pretty well. That's good to say, but it's also, and I'm talking to you from the utility finance side, that's not good to say, because people listened really well, and they adhered to the things that we were asking for, and we found that out through that evaluation. When we look at a basin-wide water supply master plan, you can't really look at anything now water supply-wise without putting some consideration for population and climate change. We know that the basin's going to grow, and we want it to grow. And you know, the argument in climate is how much warmer is it going to get or not? The general consensus is it is going to get warmer, and you'll see a couple of rates that we use in here of either one degree warmer or three degrees warmer. Now, when you look at an average day, that's not very much. But when you look over a year's time, that kind of increase, it's pretty significant. So what we did was we juggled around some of those things, and we said, what does it mean if it's a 1 percent increase in temperature or a 3 percent increase in temperature? Or if there's 50 million people that move into the North and South Carolina versus 20 million people that move into North and South Carolina? So we spent really the last four years doing a lot of juggling with data to see in the models, what does it really mean and which ones really pulled the trigger for us? And we came up with what would be the model that we would go off of, and it's called mitigated planning case B. And what that means is we have a high and a low for climate change, we have a high and a low for population change, we have a high and a low for power production changes in the basin. So there's a number of things that we looked at, and planning case B is the one. And the reason we selected that is if you look, change in safe yield versus the planning case, that's 204 million gallon a day increase in looking at this. And then the safe yield enhancement, that's a 40-year increase in just the safe yield enhancement by doing some of these things. So the key recommendations that came out then from that planning case B was an increase in water use efficiency, not how, just that... in water use efficiency, not how, just that as a member of the water management group, we agree to pursue water use efficiencies, which is something we push anyways. Hickory does very well with, like I said, we're telling people not to run the sink while they're brushing their teeth. You'd be surprised how much water that actually saves. So those are use efficiencies. Low-flow toilets, if you look at the mall, the mall actually has no flow toilets now. So there's a number of things that we do. Lowering critical water intakes, we looked up and down the basin to say which intakes are in place that are critical for lake levels that affect water supply, which would be a water plant being uncovered for water, and which ones are set there because of boat ramps. Now, recreation is a very important part of the lakes. But if it comes to recreation over people's health, public water supply, of course, we're going to put that higher threshold on public water supply. Raising target lake levels during the summer months, we actually have a level that we want the lakes set at for certain times of the year, which we found to be important. July 4th is one of those, one of those times. If you look at Easter, Easter is one of those times, you fast forward to the first day in September, that's one of those times. So we look at several days through the year and say, we want the lake to be at this level during these times of the year. And what happens is, if they're above, fine. If they're below, then that's when we start looking at the drought triggers to say, okay, we need to start conserving water, or do we not, or what does the forecast look like? So there's a number of things that we plug in there. And then enhancements to the drought response, the low inflow protocol. One of the major enhancements we looked at is, now we actually have, Duke Energy has five days to respond to reductions in flow. So if there's a drought that's there and the inflows low, Duke actually has five days to make adjustments to the flow through the dam to get water downstream. We, as a water provider, have 14 days to actually enact some kind, or call for some kind of water conservation with our customers. What we've found is, one day alone saves us a substantial amount of water. Duke can actually back their five days up to two days, and we, as water providers, think we can back up that 14 days to seven days and be able to call for those things a little bit faster and actually save quite a bit more water. So the whole point here is keeping water in the reservoirs, and preferably as high up in the basin as we can, because once it's past us, it's past us.
Once it's gone, it's gone.
Okay, so if you look then at mitig, this is all for mitigated planning case B. The one I'll highlight is Hickory. So in 2006, our average per capita use for gallons per day, is what all this is in, was 79 gallons a day per person, okay? So then if you look at the 2008 to 11 number, then we actually saw 68 gallons per day per person. So then if you look at the mitigated planning case, again, you've got the lower end and the higher end, this really is dealing with the climate change more than anything, but the climate change is a big part of it. Then what we're saying is, we want to shoot for 65 gallons per day per person, and the high end would be 58 gallons per day per person, with the basin average overall looking at 85 gallons a day per person and 70, or I'm sorry, 78 gallons a day per person to 70 gallons a day per person. So the key thing we look at is Hickory alone does not act. When we call for this, Hickory acts, Morganton acts, Valdez acts, Charlotte acts, Granite Falls, Gastonia, Rock Hill, Lancaster, Lougolf Elgin, South Carolina, so the whole basin actually acts at the same time, which is the really unique thing about this group also is, it's not just Hickory calling for conservation, it's the whole basin calling for it. Now, the interesting thing is, if you look here, again, Lake Hickory, the numbers are 65 and 58, and this is for goals, okay, for the, for the Water Supply Master Plan. These are the goals we should be at, with the basin being at 78 and 70. So then what we actually do is, we look, sorry for these numbers being small, but we actually look every year, every month, per person, what our numbers are, okay? So then if you look now, the most recent number we have is March, and we are at 57 gallons per day per person is our current number. So we actually do better than what the high-end goal is now. That's not with calling for conservation, that's just our normal consumption, our normal use. Our citizens, again, are pretty sharp. They picked up on the things that we talked about in 2007 to 2009, and then again in 2012, and it's kind of become a habit, it's stuck with them. So if you look, just that month is 57 gallons per day per person. This is last year's average, is 64 gallons a day per person. So then if you back up to this number again, 65 being the low end, 58 being the high end, we're, we're right in that sweet spot already. Which, that's only to say that that's great. Our citizens, our customers already know the types of things that we need to do. Now, we still have to teach them about water conservation, or I'm sorry, water use efficiency, and using water wisely. The difference there is, conservation really is a pointed effort one time to not use as much water. Water use efficiency is unfortunately, or fortunately, what we're seeing, and our customers are just smarter. They're not using as much water, which, again, from the utility finance side, hurts you because they're not paying as much on their water bills then. So, that, sorry, that's the pragmatic side of me that's trying to fund projects. So when you look at it then, for our customers, we are already in the sweet spot there for the mitigating planning case B. Which what that means is, our customers are ahead of the curve, and we won't have as much effort to get them to where we need them to be in the Water Supply Master Plan. Now, again, this isn't specific things. That is not a set in stone, you will not find that in the Water Supply Master Plan. This is a scenario that we ran to give a graphical representation of what one of these planning cases would look like. In the plan, it's simply strategies, saying that you should encourage water use efficiency education, and this is how. You should continue to study sedimentation that's coming in the lakes, and this is how and why. So what you're seeing then is an overall comprehensive look at the basin and the water that's in the basin. Now, another interesting thing you look at is, when you look at a good year, okay, so our normal historical years, if you look at the upper end, this is one big pool representing the, all of the lakes. If you look at this upper end, it's 3,752 million gallons a day, so 3.7 billion gallons a day of water typically coming into the lake system. And typically, you have 3.3 billion gallons of water a day coming out. So there's about 400 million gallons of usage inside, okay? During the 2007 to 2008, so the drought of record, we had 1,491, 1.4 billion gallons, that's less than half, coming into the reservoirs, and we had, say, 1.1 billion that was leaving. Those were scary numbers. That's what really got us looking into, as a basin, how do we plan for this until we look at it? Duke Energy, again, is a big part of this because they, we like power. We like having the lights on, we like to have air conditioning, we like for industry to be here. So power is an important part. The really good thing about, and this is not a Duke sales pitch, but the good thing about Duke in this is, again, they went from the potential of charging water withdrawal fees to now being the second-largest dues payer of the water management group. They pay over $100,000 a year just to be a part of this group and to do these kinds of projects because they see the benefit of it. Seamud pays the most, at just over $200,000 a year. Sorry, Charlotte Mecklenburg pays the most at just over $200,000 a year. We pay $25,000 a year to be a member of this group, and that, that's money very well spent when you look at, we plan as a basin. Covered that. So the projected results are, if you look at the Water Supply Master Plan itself, and you look at these types of things, again, doing what we're doing right now, projecting forward, we get to 2065. And that number only becomes important during times of drought. If you get normal rainfall, you get normal snow, it's not an issue. But during times of drought, that's what we have to plan for. What this does is actually pushes us out past the 2,100 threshold with times of drought. So that, it even carries us past that as a basin. So the whole goal there, again, is just that importance of trying to plan now, when we've got a little bit of time to plan for it, planning now for what we really think we're going to be facing in the future. We know population's going to grow, we want population to grow. We want economic development in this area. We want things to be better for our children and our grandchildren and our great-grandchildren than they are for us now. And what this supply plan does really is, kind of sets that framework to where the people that are coming after you and I, when we're trying to stand up and look at these things and how much water is there, it actually sets a little bit of a framework for them. So then it helps them be able to forecast those things. The other thing I'd like to draw your attention to is, we do have a website, as, as the water management group, there's a lot of really good information on that website. This full presentation is on that website, the video that I showed before is on there. So if anyone asks any questions about the water management group itself, of course, that's a wonderful resource to go to. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
What's our current license? 36 million?
We have a plant capacity of 32 million.
And what's our license? How much are we permitted to take out a day?
32 million.
Okay, 32. And Concord has a license for 10 million?
Eight million.
Eight million?
Yes, sir.
Out of our basin, would you say?
Out of our basin?
Yeah.
And don't let them forget that.
Right. Okay, so I, I looked through the report, and, I mean, and this is just an example, and I'm hoping, maybe you could, if there are others. It talked about a program in Raleigh where there were rebates given for low-flow and no-flow toilets to...
Correct.
Are there elements within this master, within this master plan that, that might be of interest to council and to, and to citizens like that, you know, that have real, you know, beyond, you know, we're already familiar with sort of the drought protocols, but, so are there some other elements there that, that really hit citizens, you know, hit home with citizens?
Those are given as examples that are in there. Any program that we would really evaluate and choose to implement, such as the, you know, several places do the toilet rebates. And what they do is actually, if the person will buy the toilet and have it installed or install it themselves, and it's a low-flow toilet, more or less, they bring the receipt and we pay them for the toilet. So there's several of those programs that are in place. We don't do that now. Not many people, not many places in North Carolina actually do that. That typically is something that, it happens closer to the coast, where they're worried about saltwater intrusion. That is one of the big things that Los Angeles did, is they actually paid for all of those toilet change outs. That gets pretty expensive pretty quick. But a lot of those projects, when we see the validity to it, we would bring it, of course, before council because it would be a budget item for us to, to implement that.
Right, but, but adopting the, the master plan in no way binds us to...
No.
...follow through with, if that, if the group said, look, we're going to recommend to all of our members that they do this.
Correct.
We, we still can bake...
Yeah, we would not be bound, that's right. We would not be bound to it. The, the master plan itself really doesn't lay anything that we have to do out. It only makes recommendations. And those recommendations then are what will be phase three of the Water Supply Master Plan, which actually is fleshing those things out. Now, once we flesh those out, then when we see any validity to it, then, of course, I would just bring that as staff back to council and say, we would like to do this, and this is the impact. That's completely up to council to actually approve or not, but we would want to give you a really good, sound engineering recommendation first. None of those items are in or recommended in the Water Supply Master Plan as it sits.
Does this group monitor pollution?
No, sir.
As well?
No, we, right now, we only do water quantity, not water quality. One of the things that we've looked at growing into a little bit is some water quality. Between Hickory and Duke Energy and one of the, the Carolina Land and Lakes, between the three of us, we've actually done a little bit of sampling on the tail race at Rodeus, just to get an idea of nutrients and plankton, just new stuff that's coming through the lake, just to get an idea of how much of that is present. And that was actually partially funded through the water management group. The water management group paid towards the study part. So we paid Carolina Land and Lakes to actually evaluate the data. Hickory staff has collected the samples, Duke Energy's lab has run the samples at no cost to anybody. Well, I mean, that's, our in-kind donation's what it is. But the water management group actually is paying Carolina Land and Lakes to do the technical part of that evaluation. But right now, we're, we're totally water qua, or water quantity, not water quality.
Who's responsible for water quality as far as monitoring?
The state of North Carolina. They sample every two or three years, the lakes, to get an idea of those, of the particular chemicals that are out there. And that's called a basin-wide assessment, is what that is. That's actually a published study every three years.
What's the biggest pollutant that's found in, in our lakes? Obviously runoff from agriculture stuff and building along the river, or what would it be?
That's a tenuous subject. But yes, it, it is nutrients, but that's because if you look at our basin, we have tree farms, we have cattle farms, we have nice plush lawns where we're putting fertilizer on the grass, we have rain, of course, that brings nitrogen in. So nutrients is probably the largest. Do we have a problem with nutrients? My argument would be, no, we don't have a problem with nutrients. But nutrients would be the largest pollutant that we have, nitrogen being the one in particular.
Yeah, so I actually saw, I looked, that made me cross-eyed. I looked at all that data from Rodeus, right? And, and, because I just wanted to answer a simple question, are we better off today than we were 10 years ago? And so what's the answer?
Yes.
We are?
Yes.
So, so it did show a reduction. At one time, Rodeus was an impaired lake.
For, for DO.
Yeah, right.
The only thing it was, was for dissolved oxygen levels. Now, arguably, nutrients lead to plant growth, which leads to lower dissolved nitrogen levels. So there's a kind of a connection.
But, but the point being, we are better.
Yes.
It had improved.
Yes.
Which in turn would improve the water quality for Lake Hickory.
Correct.
Presumably, okay.
Because those two lakes are really similar size, so they act as twins. I mean, so whatever happens in Rodeus eventually ends up happening in Hickory. So that's the interest we took, of course, in Rodeus. And Rodeus did do a 319 study, which is an EPA-funded study to say, what kinds of things do the farmers, do the subdivision people, what, what kinds of things do they need to do to make it better? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I would move that we accept the, the master plan.
I'll second that.
Motion by Lael, second by Patton. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? I think when we listen to that, we, it drives home for us that, that our exercise in contesting water transfer was, was really our duty. It was not something we chose to do, it was our duty to protect that. And as a result, for those of you who may not remember this, as a result, the Senate and House passed by about 150 to 10 legislation that severely limits transfers of water from one basin to another. And if you think about it, from the state standpoint, they don't really care all that much because it's, it's North Carolinians who are using the water, right? But from our standpoint, up here toward the top of the Catawba, we don't want our future economic growth thwarted by the fact that licenses are out there to take water out downstream.
Mayor, do you recall what they initially wanted to get out, was it 20 million gallons a day, or?
It was, it was substantially bigger than the amount they ultimately got.
I may be wrong, I thought it was...
28, yeah, so.
23?
30.
30.
30, yeah, wow.
I knew it was way...
Yeah.
And they got eight.
And you can see, that number would have a huge impact on this.
Well, and Seamud, Charlotte Mecklenburg, they didn't care. I mean, they were, they were saying, well, you know, that's their bedroom community over there. Duke Energy kind of didn't care because it's Duke customers anyway. So we were the ones who cared. And thank goodness, the people of this community responded, along with Rock Hill, South Carolina, and a few other places. And we prevailed, and we are still having to watch that. Number two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the second departmental report is really a two-part item for you to consider, a contract potentially with Fries and Nichols, and then also a budget ordinance amendment. Just to set the stage, this is a project that really has started right after the bond referendum was passed in November. So city staff had been anticipating that this work to administer the program that it takes to build the projects needs an extension of our city staff, and as well as financial services, as well as grant writing, and a number of other components. And so city staff worked in the month of December to develop a scope of work and sent out an RFQ for that, of which we got some respondents. And I'll turn it over to our Public Services Director, Chuck Hansen, to go into a little more detail. But to really sum it up, we are looking for this contract for services for a first phase for approval, you know, first reading this evening, and then bringing it back to you in the second reading in April. With that, I'll turn it over to...
Thank you, Mr. Att, Mayor, members of council. It's your lucky night, engineers back-to-back. I cut 45 minutes out of my presentation because Kevin took up that time.
Thank you.
Again, like Mr. Att said, this is sort of a two, two-part request. The first part is approve a contract with Freeze &amp; Nichols Incorporated out of Raleigh. Their home office is in Texas, but their Raleigh office will be doing the majority of this workforce with backup out of Texas. But again, this is for professional bond management program services. There's some essentially preliminary engineering associated with this. So again, sort of following up with what Mr. Att started, we selected, the bonds were approved, we went out for requests for qualifications for a bond management firm. We received three proposals. We interviewed the three firms, went through our due diligence on checking references and project history and so forth, determined that Freeze &amp; Nichols was the most qualified firm and met our needs for our own specific bond program. And that process, just a side note, that process is essentially what's laid out in North Carolina's legislature for selecting professional engineering or professional firms. So we essentially followed that process. From there, we basically begin a scope of services and a negotiation process with Freeze &amp; Nichols to determine the actual scope of what we were hiring them to do and the timeframe associated with that. I'll get into that in just a second. The other two firms, we had construction, project management experience. Wasn't quite matching up with exactly types of projects we were doing. One of the firms from Hickory had quite a bit of experience, but it is a lot of federal experience, a lot of federal housing and base, military base facility experience. That one, again, didn't quite match up with our local government and our, and our local government commission-type experience that'd be required through this. So we felt like Freeze &amp; Nichols, who had also partnered with Martin McGill, who's a firm out of Asheville and Cary, they've been in business almost 30 years, about 27 years. They do a lot of grant administration, grant writing, helping to find, again, part of our bond program is to help try to find some funds to leverage, if you will. So that's, that's where we see that, as well as economic development component associated with that firm. So that team of Freeze &amp; Nichols, Martin McGill, is, is what we're recommending to you. Little, little history about Freeze &amp; Nichols. There's a, quite a, quite an extension, extensive packet in your agenda related to them. Some of you have heard a little bit of this presentation at our work session in Raleigh. Freeze &amp; Nichols has been in business since the 1800s, late 1800s. Been around quite a, quite a long time in, in Texas area. Somewhere around 80% of their business is a local government work. So that is the, the majority of their stuff. There's not, not 100%, but, but they survive on local government work. So they understand our needs, most of our procedures and processes that we have to go through. With that said, sort of the analysis component of this and working through, getting more into, that's a little bit of history that we got to hear. And now what we're getting into is sort of more the contract or the, the project process going forward, if you will. And we felt the, the best way to tackle this was in a, in two or three phases. And what we're talking about right now is sort of the first phase. And that first phase is really looking at doing some comprehensive evaluation of the types of projects we're going to be working on and developing those true scopes of work and really getting into, to doing almost pre-engineering work about these projects to say, what are the conflicts? What are the challenges? Is it doable this way or do we have to do it this way? Doing engineering drawings, something more than a schematic drawing, if you will. Not necessarily going out there and field surveying, but doing the investigation in the field of what are the utility conflicts? What are the property ownership conflicts? All of those things to develop a true scope of work associated with these, with these projects. Some, some obviously is on our own properties. Quite a bit of it will be on, right away, quite a bit of it will, will be right adjacent to or even on, on private property that we've got to work through. So what, before we get into the design of these specific projects, we want to make sure that what we're paying for some firm to design in sort of the second phase, that we've done the homework in Phase One and knowing that we can help establish what the scope is, what the projected timeframe is, what a cost estimate is, scheduling, scheduling the, the funding mechanism and your borrowing money timeline. And then also working with the Martin McGill component to say, okay, does this project, does it fit any grant opportunities out there? And some of y'all heard us say before, a lot of these grant opportunities, you really have to get the grant awards before you can, for example, hire an engineering firm to go design it and build it. They won't reimburse you. You've got to have that in line up front. So what we want to do is do some of that homework up front so that we can help determine that. We don't want to get, we don't want to miss a chance to potentially get some other money that we can leverage our mon, bond money against because we're ahead of that game, if you will. So we want to get the preliminary work done up front so we really know the definition and scope of that project so that we can help, whether that's public-private partnership or a grant program, to, to leverage some of our own money against.
A question there. Have we identified several that we are going to pursue?
Projects.
Grants, I'm sorry.
Not yet. Not yet.
Will they not be writing the grants themselves, though, correct? They'll just identify them?
Got to get to that one, too. If I don't, that's big. So with that said, this Phase One, and again, this is on Phase 154 in your agenda, sort of the green sheet component, there's, under, under Phase One, which is the scope of services for the, for the contract with Freeze &amp; Nichols, there's a basic services section, and that is a lump sum component, if you will. That lump sum's $498,400. Under that lump sum with Freeze &amp; Nichols, there's, there's seven main tasks that we've sort of broken that Phase One into of, of the project. The first one is the pre-engineering, and that's sort of gathering all that data of, pick a, pick a project and, okay, we're going to go out there and really do our homework and determine what is in the field, what are the conflicts, whatever, what are the environmental restrictions, what are the regulations that all come into play in developing that scope of, of work, which then relates to preliminary cost estimate, relates to a timeframe, relates to, to a money, cash flow timeframe, construction timeframe and all that. The, so that happens with, with all, all the projects. We're going to back up, got a little bit out of sync. I'm going to back up one, one step here for you. In developing sort of this Phase One, we had to make some assumptions. And, and those assumptions, there's, there's sort of four key ones. One of them, this lump sum component with Freeze &amp; Nichols is a nine-month timeframe from the time we, we start. So this, this preliminary work, if you will, and establishing these, these schedules is, is working, and working through the Bond Commission as well as councils. That's, so this first phase is a nine-month timeframe. In doing that, the projects that we're talking about in, in there, again, this is under the analysis section of your green sheet, truthfully, includes the waterfront park, that's Gartner Rotary Park, west of US 321. The city walk, which is a little around University of Fourth Street, west side of Union Square. Seven streetscape projects and five gateway projects. Again, all of those are separate locations, if you will. Some, some of the gateways may overlap on some of the streetscape, but it's, again, essentially a separate, separate project, so you could essentially add, add those together in terms of total numbers of projects. It does not include the 1764 Business Park. That's almost, you've sort of heard that already. That's, that's a sort of a project in its own right, if you will. Be handled a little different. Now, they may handle some in a future phase as far as the, the financing and the information going to the public, but sort of the, the scoping and the, and design component will be held, handled differently. And then the city will handle the, the public outreach. So, so some of the information that's provided by Freeze &amp; Nichols, obviously, will be part of getting that out to the public and, and using our channels for, for that. So, so real quick, we get into at least 14 different projects that, that sort of relate under that task number one of, of compiling all that background information and, and conflicts and scoping out what, what needs to be done. And again, this is, this is working with the Bond Commission, staff, council to, to develop those, those true scopes. Second step, second task under, under that Phase One is the, if you remember, the city walk had a, when it was done through land design, they actually had a rendering schematic of what that looked like. We didn't do that for the Riverwalk. That's still going to be needed to be done for the Riverwalk as part of the scoping project. So again, Task Two, under the Freeze &amp; Nichols contract, is, is that Riverwalk rendering task of, of putting that together from a typical sections per, respective view and, plan view. Task Three, development of project and program parameters. That's really developing the preliminary cost estimates, the schedules, the timelines, cash flow curves, bond drawdown times associated with when these projects sort of fall in order and what order, what groups we put together and, and when we borrow money. Because again, you don't want to necessarily borrow money for every one of them as you go forward because that, that costs money in itself. So that's putting together those cash flow scenarios, as well as, which you have to have the estimates to, to do that with. Task Four, supplemental funding task. That goes back to looking at opportunities now that we sort of know what those scopes are and what the preliminary costs are. Are there any grants or any funding opportunities, whether it's grant opportunities, public-private needs, opportunities, fundraising? How can we leverage some of this bond money against other monies to, to continue on and, and do other, you know, further, further scope of work with that? Task Five, economic development task. One of the things that we talked about with, especially with the, the city walk, was how does that help us with some economic development? You know, we talked about 1764 being a, a Class One Business Park, but how does the, how does the city walk help from an economic development in, in more the center city of, of town and the outlying areas around that? And so part of, again, of working, working through this is to look at, look at the properties along this center city walk and seeing what's available for some type of proposed economic development and give some projections and renderings of what those potential sites are. So again, that's, that's looking and picking through the sites that are available along the, this center city walk and taking 10 of those sites and, and giving an end product that is a schematic of what that could be, could turn into. And then there's, therefore, gives even the property owners or the, the real estate end of the business a useful product of, of here's what it could be. And so that, that's how we can grow some economic development associated with that particular project. Task Six, there's a part of this, you've heard us talk a little bit about, is program process, program management software, which is simply a, usually a computer system of some type, computer software that's, that's geared towards professional project management. And then you begin plugging these projects into that and running them through for, from a tracking standpoint. And that, and that'll help with your scheduling, your conflicts, your funding, your borrowing, again. So that's, that's the, the software program that, that we need to put together for these. So again, some of these tasks, obviously, will be running concurrently together and overlapping. Task Seven, program coordination and management. That's again, built throughout all of these projects in its timeframe. That's the staff meetings, that's the Bond Commission meetings, that's the council meeting. So again, that's just, that's basically working, working with us as an extension of our staff, if you will, to, to, throughout, throughout this whole program of Phase One. Again, from a, from a future phase, sort of the next steps after this nine-month window, you actually have the projects, you have their scopes, you have their estimated cost you have. Then you could really say, okay, let's tackle these projects at this timeframe. Let's try to get this money for these projects. The next steps are to begin, sort of a Phase Two, is to, then you begin into actually requests, design for design firms to design Project A, B, C, D, E. And then you start really getting into your true construction drawings associated with that. One other thing that we're, we're working on separate from this is sort of some design standards that will be able to be utilized by, if you choose, Freeze &amp; Nichols and the design firms, to sort of have, again, it sort of ties into our branding topic, that we have some of these kind of minimum standards, if you will, for what this stuff's going to look like and feel like and, and look like. So obviously, some steps after Phase One. So all of that Phase One that I talked about is sort of, that's in that lump sum fee. There's an option or an opportunity under another section, the special services, that if we choose to add, say we do the economic development component west of the 321 Bridge on the Riverwalk, there's property over there. So that could be done as the special services section, which is sort of then, we know, more details, more scope. That's actually a separate negotiated amount to this contract. But that, that's set out with typical, typical engineering contracts. There's unit prices, and you try to figure out what, how many hours of work and what all your deliverables are to get to that, to get to that number for those special services. So there's, there's an opportunity to add some stuff as we go forward and say, okay, we need to, we need to pick this up and do this on this particular project, too, or separate project, if you will. But that, this contract allows some additional work, if you will, outside the fixed, fixed lump sum under the basic services. From there, I'll try to answer your questions. That's, that's 60 pages in five minutes.
Okay, I'll start. So, we've got nine months, project, contract duration. That's estimated. They've got language in here that says, "Look, if it's delayed through no fault of ours, then we could, we'll adjust that and we can charge you more." I mean, talk to me about that. That doesn't seem, I, I get the whole, the whole, since this is so well-written with regards to task, it would seem like just the fact that things, by the way, in my experience, things do take longer than you anticipate. So I'm just trying to thwart off something down the road.
They do, and one of, even from both sides, our side, city side, engineer side, and this isn't just, this, this particular contract, this is almost any engineering contract or professional services contract. I mean, what, what they are providing us with is staff time, labor hours, if you will, amount of time to do something. So if they say, okay, here's these recommendations, there's got to be an estimated time that we're going to get back to them with yes, no, yes, no. We agree, disagree, do something different. We can't just let that drag on forever. So you've got to put some kind of timeframe in there. Or what I see happening sometimes is the local governments really don't respond in a timely fashion and all of a sudden, everybody's dead in the water. And so they're no different than a contractor. They're, they're scheduling their workload, their staffing for projects, this project, other projects. So from that standpoint, they've got to have a little bit of security. And I'm not talking about Freeze &amp; Nichols, I'm talking about the engineering profession as a whole. They've got to have a little bit of understanding that when I submit stuff to you, I'm going to get it back in a timely fashion. Now, that's a challenge, especially when you've got commissions and, and other players involved, even beyond the quote, "local government" itself. And, and so that's, that's where we're going to have to do our job as staff to keep things moving in a timely, in a timely... things moving in a timely, in a timely manner.
Uh, you had indicated that, uh, they are not a design firm, right? They won't?
Well, okay, let me tell you. They are a design firm. They are not a design firm for our project. They are a management firm. They will not be designing the end product to be constructed.
Well, how can they estimate something? They, they don't know what it's going to look?
Well, that, that's, that's this task one is, is a very complicated task one, if you will. It is going out and doing the field investigations, looking at all the conflicts and putting this thing together and saying, okay, this is the scope and based on, based on history, experience, our design, other local designs, here's what these things cost, you're going to put together a preliminary estimate for that scope. So you're going to, you're going to, you're going to do enough pre-engineering to develop that scope.
Sounds like a double dipping. I mean, why don't you just, if there are so many, what, seven projects or how many projects we have?
We'll get to 14 pretty quick, probably.
14 projects. So why are we not going out and getting a design firm for this one project? And wouldn't they have to go through all of the same situation that Nichols and Freeze is going to go through?
The good, that, that's another alternative. It's probably in this case with some variables out there, maybe in our feeling, not the best ones, because all of a sudden, you're trying to herd 14 different firms to get them in some kind of consistent alignment. In this case, we're using one firm to do that and this information is going to be given to those 14 firms to begin to go with. So it's not a double dipping in that, it's all going to start all over again. This information will be then given to...
But they don't know what it's going to look like, do they?
That's part of what we've got to work through, through the commission, staff and council to get that scope of work. Right now, we don't know whether we're building, we're building a vehicle.
Right.
We're building a pickup truck or we're building a car?
Okay.
We're trying to figure out that, okay, we're building SUV. Now we're going to hand that, we're building SUV to a firm to, to really build and design that, design and, and design that SUV. Right now, we're, we know we're building a vehicle. And so answering your question, yeah, it can be done by 14 different firms, but then you're paying 14 different firms and, and trying to manage that, which gets to be an expense and a time-consuming process in itself.
So they're going to be like an overall construction manager of the everything?
They're, they're going to be, they're going to be a program manager over everything. Once we get to the design and construction component, that'll be another phase, but that trying, I think what you're, I'm, I think the answer to your question is yes, but in this state, at this stage, think of it as bringing the scope in, defining the scope, defining the preliminary cost estimates, seeing if there's other money available for that, getting the regulatory issues out of the way. The railroad says we can't do something, we need to know that upfront before we start getting down the road from some kind of design and we have a problem that the railroad's not going to allow. I mean, that's, that's an example.
You also said something about the minimum standards is set out. Who is going to work with that? Because I think in one of our discussions about another road, Mr. Lael brought up the issue of the bike lane, that we want to make sure that what we envision as...
That's...
The better standard is in fact what they are given to work with rather than, here's what we get, but gosh, why didn't we do it this way and, and have that input?
That's, that's where between staff's comments, the bond commission's comments, and, and working through those scopes and saying, here's, here's what we want our end product to be, that's all, that's all that's going to happen in this nine months. So that when it does go to a design firm, here's sort of what that looks like, here's what we're expecting to get.
And is this capped at the 400 and some odd thousand?
No.
No? So it can, it can balloon?
This, the scope, the scope for these services is a lump sum for that.
Okay.
If we add to that, to that scope, yes, there's an opportunity to increase. If for some reason we delay on our end, the, the city's end, whether that's, you know, if this, if this should happen in a two-week window and we make it happen in a five-week window, this whole project slowed down a month and a half.
Who is determining that, that timeframe of response so that we in fact do our?
As, as we move through this, we will, I mean, all of these are ongoing live projects, if you will, working through that.
Does the 498,000 include expenses? Is it 498 plus expenses or 490?
For the, for the lump sum component, it's, it includes expenses.
Do you know how much that is? The expenses?
No, I'm, I'm ahead now.
Maybe that's unfair.
Now, again, there's a lot of printing, I mean, printing costs and some of that stuff we'll be doing in-house, but, but, I mean, in this case...
And this is just travel expenses?
Yeah, I mean...
Just their out-of-pocket travel expenses?
Right. All that, all that's included in, in the lump sum number?
In the 498, 400.
Do you have any idea? Any idea on how many hours and what rate per hour we're using for this? And I know the rates are going to vary depending on the qualifications.
Right, right. And, and their rates are in, in the document.
Oh, okay. How many hours, do you know?
Nine months worth. But, no, no, seriously, that, that's the challenge in this because what we're, what we're still looking at is 14 projects, if you will, and each one's got sort of their own types of specialties. And so that's where they'll be pulling from their, from their, you know, deep staff to, to utilize that, those, uh, those services or those experiences, if you will.
They have budgeted, or the proposal assumes 500 hours. You can find it in your, under the exhibit marked compensation. And it says this...
500?
Shall not exceed 500 hours. If Freeze-Nichols sees the scope of services changing, so that additional services are needed, we will, they will notify the owner before proceeding.
Now, 500 hours is a thousand dollars an hour.
Well, there are multiple people working on those, on those tasks, so...
Now, I used to charge by the hour.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, excuse me, I'm reading this wrong.
You're reading that wrong.
That's just for special services.
Yes.
That's just for special services.
I wanted to correct you until you got there.
That out of context.
Yes.
Yeah, that's just for special services.
And I think the reason we're getting so many questions, let me, let me first point out that, that I certainly have no problem with, uh, the Freeze and Nichols. I'm not familiar with them, but I'm very familiar with Charles Archer who's here, former, uh, former executive with the League of Municipalities. So I'm certain, uh, that the questions we're asking have to do only with the fact that this is a considerable amount of money. Now, it's only 1.25% of $40 million, but it's a considerable amount of money. And I think it's critical that we show the people that we are going to watch this money the first day and the last day.
I may add, it's a considerable amount of work also. Said I may add, it's a considerable amount of work also.
And it's a considerable amount of work? No, 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 I, I, but, but is there a, can, can we, how will we know from week to week if the work is progressing and that we aren't going to get, how often are they going to bill us? Uh, at what point are they going to sit down and talk about time overruns?
We, we will be getting weekly updates, which is part of the information that, that we expect to get out of this, this project. Um, there's, um, if, if you look in here, if you actually go into the task, it talks about so many meetings, uh, with the bond commission, it talks about, uh, uh, deliverables of, of that type of stuff. So some of those things are, are actually written in the contract. So you, you'll have weekly updates, sort of like, I guess, sort of like your blurbs that you get, for example. Um, the, uh, there'll be monthly invoicing and that will only be paid based on what services have been completed. That's something that, that's not an automatic payment, that's reviewed by staff and approved before it goes through for payment. And that's based on what we've seen as deliverables that come to us. Trying to answer your question. That's not a, that's not an automatic billing and, and it's not reviewed. It's, it's based on the percent complete of the tasks that are, that are being worked on, uh, you know, during that, during that time period.
Well, our staff track, track record is excellent. We came in quite a bit under on the, on the sewage plant, for example, didn't we? I mean, so that's not even an issue. The issue is, in my mind, the issue is that this is the first money we're spending. And it's very visible. And I'd just like to, I'd like to feel a little more comfortable with the, with the workup of the numbers and how we're going to get a bi-weekly or monthly assessment of where we stand.
Well, that will be provided by the consultants.
But, well, it shows, for example, to date, we have, to date, we, we are on schedule with the work we anticipated getting done. We have 420 hours in. We were projecting at this point, 420 hours. The billing rates are consistent with what we use.
That's, that's all the, all the staffing scheduling and, and, uh, program management components that run along with this.
You know, part of our, um, our thinking was that, you know, we have seven years to, to draw down the funds for the bonds. And so the thought of, of hiring a, an extension of our staff to look at all of the possible projects that came from inspiring spaces and that were identified and the bond referendum needs, needs one firm looking at all the choices to know which ones to do first, troubleshoot, get the most bang for our buck. And that's what that firm can provide us, or, or any of those firms that, um, solicited all had that same concept, that they need to help us, um, troubleshoot all of the projects at once instead of knowing in our, um, in our minds that we should do, um, Lenora Rhine Boulevard Streetscape, for instance, that that should be done first and totally, completely and independently. Well, if we find out and we're six months down the road that that project's not viable, then we have to, we've spent a lot of money to have a project possibly sit on the shelf. And in this case, they're doing that pre-engineering to help us avoid, um, designing things that don't need to be designed if they're not practical. So this is a way to do that. But we feel that the time period, the nine months, is aggressive, but we need to be aggressive. And our bond commission needs to be, you know, in lockstep with us to, to move ahead with this pre-engineering, their, their role to review the pre-engineering work and then to move forward, which projects get designed and then help select those design firms and get two or three or five projects, um, designed completely. And we'd love, we need to be on down that road so we can draw down those funds.
So it sounds like the bond commission possibly will be meeting more often?
Yes, it seems that that might be the case, that every, that quarterly, we will have the full meeting of the group. But then, sorry, we anticipate subcommittees based on, um, three areas, in particular Riverwalk, City Walk and Streetscapes. And those groups might meet, that would be a third of the commission, they'd be divided up and they would meet more frequently and our staff would manage that. But we would then bring all that information back to the full group quarterly and they could report out to each other.
Have we, have we established any priorities on any of these projects?
Not yet. That's really part of why the, it's so important to look at all the projects in this technical...
Are, are they establishing priorities on this stuff?
They, the consultants or?
The Freeze?
Freeze-Nichols? Well, I think they are giving us recommendations for here's, here's the, here's the projects that are going to cost, um, you know, X and these are going to cost a whole lot more. Maybe the time, we have more right-of-way already, um, you know, and under acquisition, we have, you know, fewer permitting issues. There could be 100 things that affect the priority of the projects. And maybe it's some funds from DOT that go toward, you know, grant funds that we have to spend money pretty quickly to access DOT funds. We've got some possibilities for grants that may also trigger what comes first. So it's not just doing what we want to do first, it's being strategic about it.
Well, are we going to establish a war room or something where we can all...
Yes.
We could look at these projects and say...
Absolutely. We turned Warren's office into that war room.
Okay, very good.
And there are maps on his desk right now. So, yeah, we will do that.
When the department heads went to Warren, I think they thought they were going to war.
Yeah. It's very fitting.
We were going to war.
Will we appoint a person from city staff to kind of coordinate all of this?
But, you know, it's been a good process. We sort of have a point team. And so that includes Chuck and Mac and Brian, myself, Nick, as needed, and Arnita and Warren when he was around.
I drew the short straw, so I got to stand up here tonight.
Yeah, but this, this all comes as a recommendation from all of us.
Well, it sounds like a typical first responsibility in order to be able to get this going and get it all, you know, get it all together. And I would imagine that this is how other cities do their first start.
I think it's especially when we have so many projects and, you know, we weren't, um, we didn't want to pre-engineer all these projects ahead of the bond referendum. You know, we had a lot of angst to, do we want to go ahead and know which ones we really can do? Well, we didn't want to get ahead of the referendum so the voters, you know, um, didn't have access to finally designed plans. Now we have to start that process and, and work toward final design. But we haven't gotten that on, that far on any of these projects yet.
Are there any alternatives to, to this first step? To Freeze and Nichols?
Not do anything.
Well, okay, so I mean, I mean, this is necessary, what you're saying.
You know, let me put it this way. Mr. Hanson is going to have his hands full dealing with Freeze-Nichols and this committee, and he's still got to be making sure the potholes get fixed.
Right.
That's the reason you have to use people like Freeze-Nichols, because when they're committed to this, they're not dealing with potholes. And, uh, uh, so I don't really have a question about that. It's just, in my opinion, I just, I want a better feel for how we can show, and maybe, maybe, maybe we have enough. I, I, I just, I just want to feel like every month that, that I have a handle personally on, on how much of this 498 has been spent and whether we are, we're in good shape on it.
You know, and the Bryant's mayor, one way to do that is with that Socrata platform. And we could put the lump sum in there, 498, and as they bill, we can understand this percentage of task one is complete, this is how much has been built. I mean, that's, that...
And show the drawdown.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it shows it by, by graphs or whatever.
That's exactly how...
And that's, and that's how it'll work. I mean, that's how it'll get approved.
Yeah, right.
Or disapproved.
Yeah, right, right.
I want, I want the public to be able to just get up there and look at it.
And, yeah, and, yeah, so anybody can look.
Everybody can see it.
Yeah, because they voted for it.
Has the bond committee that we appointed, have they met, did they have any input in this situation?
No formal input. They, um, have just met, um, some of the staff from Freeze-Nichols informally, but not, you know, this is really a, a process that we've handled at the staff level.
You, you have the first meeting?
It's our first meeting with the bond commission is April 24th. That's a couple of Fridays from now and...
What's the time and place?
That is at 8:30 in the morning on Friday, April 24th. And it's at Piedmont Wagon at the, um, New Cornerstone United Facility.
You said what time, 8:30?
8:30 to 10:30, right.
What'd you say?
8:30 to 10:30.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So let me ask you, Andrew, will, will the, um, will the mine mixer piece be more driven by the bond commission?
I think so.
Than, than Freeze-Nichols?
Yes. Freeze-Nichols will, um, give us some updates and we can share that out on Mine Mixer or ask for input, or the bond commission can say, well, we would like some public input about how the Riverwalk looks in this particular area or what the function is. That's the way mine mixer will work. And then Socrata will be actually just a mirror of all the expenses that you just mentioned, the drawdowns and, as well as our regular budget. It'll have a special section for, um, the bonds. So, yes.
Well, the staff's gone through the process of interviewing, was it three firms? Three firms. And, uh, and, and I guess, uh, I guess I'm prepared to make a motion, we approve the contract. As long as everyone understands we, we as council are going to have to be, uh, involved, particularly in this initial expenditure, not watching every dollar or anything, but close, closely, because people are going to be making observations about the next eight years of expenditures based on how we handle this.
One thing, now, um, one thing that, that is helpful to me and that I take comfort in is that there is a provision in the contract that allows the city to terminate at our convenience, at no penalty. convenience, at no penalty. So, you know, we just say, for whatever reason, and we, you know, if we need to do that, I hope it wouldn't come to that, but I, that's something I think that's, that's handy to have.
I second the mayor's motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
And that's A of the step. B of the step is a.
I'll make a motion, we budget to your map.
I'll second that.
To pay what we used to prove.
Thank you.
You can't do anything else.
Second by Ms. Patton, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
There we go. Thanks, Mayor.
Any appointments?
Mr. Mayor, we, we do need to make an appointment. You noticed the last section, Western Piedmont Regional Trans Authority Board of Directors need to replace Mr. Wood with myself and then Caroline Coen to be the alternate. That's a staff appointment to that board.
I'll make a motion to approve both Ms. Surratt and Ms. Coen.
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Guess.
No.
Second by Zangarelli.
Or Guess.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion's carried. Any petitions and requests? Matters not on the agenda? General comments? How'd the Easter egg go?
Excellent.
Good Easter egg, huh?
There's still eggs out there, probably.
Did you, did you, did you get them started?
I did. I took them countdown, but some of them ran on two.
Oh, they learn so quickly.
I wasn't one holding the line and holding them back. But a lot of kids showed up, it was cold, but I couldn't see much diminishment in the numbers at all. I mean, they were really excited and when you got kids excited, they don't think about temperature.
How many eggs did Parks and Rec do this year?
25,000 eggs.
It just blows my mind.
The Elsley Place for the eggs, is that right? Elsley Place pays for the eggs, Parks and Rec organizes it, get them, puts them out there. And it's amazing how few minutes it takes for 25,000 eggs.
There's no blade of black grass left unturned.
Also, we've got a lot of great things going on in this city right now. We've, Farmers Market's gearing up. When does it start?
April 16th.
April 16th.
18th.
April 18th?
April, Saturday the 18th.
This Saturday the 18th?
Well, I don't know.
It's already here.
Next week from Saturday.
The music series, we've got a lot of good things planned.
Crawdance.
Crawdance. Great progress on the building that is down across from Clark Tire. So we've got a lot of good things going on and I am, I hope everybody's as optimistic about the bond referendum. So many people come to me and say, this is exciting and when are we going to get something out of the ground? So I'm going to challenge Mr. Archer and Mr. Hanson and all the others, let's get something out of the ground. Any other comments? Motion to adjourn?
Send it.
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Minnie, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.